All right, the appointed hour has been arrived. Recognizing the presence of a quorum, I call this meeting of the precise city council to order. Ask you to please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing from the invitation to be led by Councilman Stroud.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, our Father, we thank you for the day that you provided for us, Lord God, because we know every day is a blessing. Lord God, we pray for our leaders in our city, our state, and our nation, Lord God. We pray for those leaders, Lord God, and the jobs that they do. Lord God, we pray for unity amongst people, Lord God, amongst your people. And Lord God, we also give out special prayer for the Pittsburgh area, Lord God. Lord God, we thank you for the leader that you all prayed in the day in Pittsburgh and the things they instill in people in this community. Lord, we thank you, we love you. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Welcome all those who are here to conduct business with the city of Forsyth tonight. The record reflects that all members of council are present with the exception of Councilman Gouldstry, who is on his way. He's coming across the parking lot. He'll be here before I finish speaking. All right, let's see. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I'm aware of one change. We need to add another invoice for all seasons free service in the amount of $5,600, which would be under item seven, and it would be number four.
Yeah, item number four.
I'm sorry. Twelve. Correction. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? I have a motion from Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Stroud, to approve the corrective agenda. Any additions, deletions, or corrections thereto the agenda? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? And the agenda is approved unanimously. The record reflects that Councilman Gouldstry was present for that motion. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April 19, 2021 council meeting. You should have been provided a copy in advance electronically. Is there a motion to approve of those minutes?
Yes.
Motion from Councilman Stroud, seconded by Councilman Hewitt. Any additions, deletions, or corrections thereto? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? Record reflects that those minutes are approved unanimously. And the next item on the agenda is a bicentennial update by Mr. Richard Dumas and Ralph Bass. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Wilson, members of council. Mr. Dumas, and I appreciate the opportunity to update you on the plans for the county's bicentennial. The main celebration will be September the 24th and 25th.
Twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Excuse me, I misread my calendar. Jonathan Adams, the district attorney, is coming along expeditiously with arrangements for a two-day festival with entertainment, dedicated arts and crafts displays, a car show, historical portrayals, and of course, a few selected food vendors. A highlight of that weekend will be a ceremony in which we hope Governor Brian Kemp and other elected officials will participate, bringing state recognition to our county's bicentennial. Earlier in the month, there will be a dramatic presentation at the Fine Arts Center, a sort of look down memory lane, from what I understand, with music and dance, and not a great deal of emphasis upon military and social history. At this point, we would like to request the closing of Jackson Street between Main and King Streets and of West Johnson between North Lee and Phelps for that weekend. Finally, as the beginning of 2023 is more than, more or less, a year and a half away, let me encourage members of council to consider how Forsyth should properly celebrate its bicentennial.
We came before y'all about five or six months ago, I guess, with very little money in our treasure chest, but we need about $40,000, I think, is what was estimated, to put this festival on to the extent that we'd like to initially, and I think we're probably going to continue that goal right there if possible. We have more than satisfied, more than half of that amount. Probably with pledges included already, we're probably up to two-thirds, or maybe even more than that. But the county was our first donor for this. They gave us $5,000. The development authorities pledged $500 at their last meeting, so we were trying to find out if the city council would be interested in contributing a little bit to it as well. Just to remind you all, with some help from Ralph and Bobby and some others, I chaired the Smithsonian Sports Committee on behalf of the city several years ago, and the county commissioners at that time, including Commissioner Evans at the time, they matched the amount that the city donated to that particular venture. So, you know, we understand if y'all aren't able to match what the county did, but if y'all could do anything to contribute to us, it'd be very beneficial. If y'all would like to do that tonight, it'd be great for us. We could find a good use for it, but if you'd like to consider it and tell us to come back another time, we'll be glad to do that as well.
I'd like to make the motion that we match the amount that the county gave.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Stroud, seconded by Councilman Dodd, thus to match the $5,000 contribution of Monroe County Commission. Is there any discussion or questions related to this motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, so approved.
Thank you all.
Sounds like a good settlement.
Appreciate y'all.
All right. Thank you. I want to call this. Thanks, y'all.
When does the capsule go, the time capsule go? Actually, maybe.
That's still up for debate. We're thinking now we'd like to do it in advance of the festival and have kind of a ceremony when we dig up the old one. We don't know what's in the old one, so we don't want it to be something to disappoint everybody when they come see what's in it.
I don't know where it is, but I don't know what's in it either.
Where is it?
On the courthouse square.
It's on the courthouse square, right next to the traffic signal.
Right on the corner out there. We will be, I'll let you know in advance when we have, we'll hope a lot of people will come out, see us, dig it up, and we'll be, you can go online to our website, and I think it's on the Facebook, and you can submit items that you think would be good to put in the new one when we put one down in September, so be thinking, be mindful of what y'all would like to see in there. We obviously want something representative from the city, so if y'all keep that in mind, and anybody from, any citizens of the community that want to offer up suggestions, we'll be glad to listen to them, and we'll pick out what fits in there.
And if I remember this right, the thing's only about this big, the one that's in the ground now, about this big around about.
Would you say it's like almost the size of the podium, probably? About two-thirds the size of this podium. It's like, it's like a safe. The other one, I'm not sure, I wasn't around, but that's.
It's about this big around, about the same length.
Okay.
Looks like a little cylinder.
Any other questions?
Thank you all.
All right, appreciate y'all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, the next item on the agenda is employee recognition. Ms. Hall?
Yes, we have several recognitions that we would like to make tonight. Mr. Will Davis is here to make the first three of those for the best of Monroe. We have three city employees, city personnel that were named as the best of in my report. That's.
Yes, this is something we've done for 13 years, every year.
Come on up here. The actual employees that you have, they're all here.
I'll bring my lane with me. For 13 years, we've run this full-page ballot, and the readers, the reporter take votes. We have no Dominion voting machines. It's all done by paper ballots, so you can authenticate the results. And this year, the city only will guarantee one winner because we have best city official, and that goes this year to Mayor Eric Wilson. Congratulations. The other two could have been anyone in the county. Best firefighter could have gone to any county or city firefighter, and the winner was Hunter McClendon. And finally, last but not least, and Forsyth City Code Enforcement Officer Jerry Malone on Best Public Safety Office, Law Enforcement Officer.
Diane wants pictures.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
They'll just do it with the picture.
Yeah, you said something to tell them.
Their cheeks are getting whipped up, Diane.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. They'll just do it with the picture. With this.
Yeah, you said something to tell them.
Their cheeks are getting whipped up, Diane.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. They'll just do it with the picture. With this.
Yeah, you said something to tell them.
Their cheeks are getting whipped up, Diane.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. They'll just do it with the picture. With this.
Eric, those posters are also stickers. You're going to peel them back off, or you can just close them.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you. All right, Ms. Hall?
Yes, the next person that we would like to recognize is, nobody knows better than I do as to how much the city clerk does, how much she does to keep things running with the city, and so I would like to take this opportunity, this is professional municipal clerk of cities, like the second to remain the A, and I would like to observe this by you guys approving the proclamation that Mayor Wilson has.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Motion by Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Dodd. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously, so approved. Well, now I will be going to have to read the proclamation. So, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists through the world, throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Eric S. Wilson, Mayor of the city of Forsyth, and the Forsyth City Council, do recognize the week of May 2nd through May 8, 2021, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk Regina Ivy and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And I'll commit this to you.
Diane forgot to cheer you up. She's going to take another one of the lens cap off.
Congratulations, Diane. Thank you for your service.
And we do have one more recognition routine I would like to.
I want to introduce my new payroll ATR clerk. This is Mostjoy Martin. She comes to the city with many years of HR payroll experience, and she has already, in the three weeks that she's been with the city, has proved to be invaluable, and so we are lucky to have her.
Thank you. I look forward to many years.
Do what? Why don't you take your mask down?
So we can see you.
That's me.
All right. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
All right. Any other recognitions?
That's it.
All right. Next item on the agenda is telekonto construction review of progress by Michael Garrison. Mr. Garrison?
I'm not going to ask a lot of questions tonight. You can leave. Thanks for having me again tonight. I'll just give you a kind of an update of where we are, with our progress, and where we plan to be. And I know that a few of you went over last Thursday, Thursday night, to see the project. We, right now, exterior-wise, the things that you see outside, which is what, you know, everybody sees running on the road, we're working on the grading of the site, get it on grade, putting in the curb and gutter. They were actually supposed to start today. Unfortunately, they weren't able to, but we're, we've got it on, we're their next dry day, to put that in, which will put, follow up with rock, which will clean the site up, which will help with all the mud and carryover that goes onto the, onto the streets. So, exterior-wise also, we're on the downhill slope on the brick and the glass framing, and glass being put in. So they're putting in framing, and another crew's behind them filling the holes with the glass, which is a great thing. The roof's about two-thirds done, headed towards the, to the chamber side. They're working on that. That, of course, is weather-driven, but they are, we're on their, we're on their schedule. Inside, the drywall started today. They started up on the second floor. I just walked through on the way over. Lot of progress for one day. They're going to have 10 to 12 hangers there tomorrow again, so I see midweek having the second floor hung out with the drywall, and they'll go straight to the first floor, start hanging it out, and I think at that point, you see all the skeleton over there, you'll start seeing some, something that looks more finished as we go forward from there. So, still feel good about the schedule. We're still pushing to get this completed as fast as possible and keep the quality levels something we all be proud of. So, answer any questions, or anything you may have?
I like it. Keep pushing.
Keep pushing. We'll keep pushing.
Any questions?
We'll probably need to address it in the next meeting, because we currently have an approval of 9016, which that will come before the next council meeting, but for the next council meeting, we'll need a updated change order for that.
Right. Okay, no problem.
Lot of progress between last month's walk-through and this one.
And hopefully, next, next, next month will be the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, the next, next item on the agenda is a public hearing of proposed ordinance for the alteration and amendment of the corporate boundaries through annexation. Councilman?
Just before you for action on proposed ordinance to annex 591.4 acres into the city, and with the zoning of various parts of the total acreage to be as closely as nearly possible to what these parcels are zoned in the county, but under the city codes, of course. The application with the planning and zoning on March the 27th, and thank you how it got to the minutes, and that planning and zoning meeting approval was recommended without any opposition that night, and constable from planning and zoning, it's Chris Mayers for. Advertisement has been run in public since the county reported newspaper, March 31, April 7, April 14, April 21, and April 28, giving notice of tonight's public hearing and council action. Notice required by Georgia law to the county, it was given by certified mayor, delivered on March 24. More than 30 days have passed, and there's been no response or reply from the county. The application is of FJH LLC and Tempor Assets LLC as joint venture tenants in common of the property, and it's here, as I said, for a public hearing and council action on the proposed ordinance.
All right, this time we'll open for the public hearing. Public hearing is now considered open. Are there any in the audience here to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Ignoring Mr. Hannah, any others?
Oh, I have eight.
Okay. Are there any in the audience to speak in opposition? And are there any here to speak just because you want to speak? It's going to be four of you. All right, so this is the time to do that. This is the public hearing. Is the zoning officer not here?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no official report from the zoning officer.
Other than the planning and zoning.
Okay, so we'll begin with those in favor, and recognize Mr. Hannah. If you will state your name and address, everybody that speaks, if you will, please come to the podium so we can get your audio, and if you'll state your name and address for the record.
So, my name is Ty Hannah, 4268 Riverview Drive in Peachtree Corners, Georgia. First, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council for allowing me to come again this evening, and present to you additional property that we'd like annex into the city. I've got two charts up here, and it may be beneficial if you, you know, kind of just see a visual. The bottom chart is the property that was annexed into the city about two and a half, three months ago, and that was everything from this point down. This is Smith Road by reference, and this is Interstate 75 by reference. And so what we're asking for this evening is this additional parcel right here, and this is Smith Road again by reference, Interstate 75 by reference, and it picks up from the northern piece of the boundary of this property, crosses Johnsonville Road into this northern track off of Johnsonville Road. I've had several questions on why we split the annexation request up into two pieces, simply because it is two legal separate entities that own these properties, but the ultimate makeup is exactly the same, the exact same ownership structure at the end of the day with HHH, the exact same owners, myself, Mr. Hurt, and Mr. Frank Hanna, that own this property, so it's the exact same percentage. We split the annexation file up into two pieces again because it's two legal entities. So we opened this piece first that touched the city boundaries, and now we're asking for this northern track. It is also different in one other respect. All the property in the first annexation, as the city attorney referenced, was annexed into agriculture, because that's what the property was currently zoned. This property inside the county right now is not all zoned agriculture, and I've got it over here in color coding, and I actually got to do this, the first time I've done this since about fifth grade. I got the color-coded map, so what you see here is the color codings of the current county zonings. We're asking for the exact same, or as close as we could get to the city zoning that corresponds to the county zoning. So we're really not asking, in my opinion, for a change of zoning. We want to bring it up the exact same way as it's in the county, and bring it up to the city. They don't match up exactly the same. I think residential does, but there's, there are some slight differences in these other places.
What's the PUD, the blue?
This is PUD. This is multi-person.
You happy to answer any questions, concerns in my house? Anybody else? Normally, we hold the questions to.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry.
I always rather do that.
Okay. Your portion is open, and then we have questions.
Thank you.
And you'll have a chance to revise when you think you want to.
Thank you.
All right, recognizing Mr. Evans.
I am Larry C. Evans, 31 Marshall Road, Forsyth, Georgia, 31029. About 15 years ago, Mr. Ty Hannah and Mr. Ken Hurt approached the Development Authority with the acquisition of property from here on up to Johnsonville Road, and I was on the Development Authority at that particular time, and on the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. We had no properties to, to show prospective industries. We had basically nothing, and we're in that situation right now. I'm currently on the Development Authority board, and I'm the only member on the board right now that was on the board when they approached us about 15 years ago. And right now, we've got about 18 acres down on Harold G. Park Way, and we've got another 108 acres up on Indian Springs, and the property in Indian Springs got restrictions because of the railroad track. We didn't have people to look at it, but no takers. And there's about 66 acres in the park down on Rumble Road. We do not own that property. That property is owned by a company called IDI, and that land is rather expensive. That's what's left there, and there have been people come and look at it, but nobody's bought those 66 acres. These gentlemen gave us a proposal that we thought was very unreal, that they were going to come in, and they were going to acquire all of this property, and they were also willing to loan us some monies and let us have any portion of the property, any 100 acres we could pick out, but they were going to use us as a marketing conduit. We thought that was a marvelous idea, thought it was great, too, too, too unreal to believe. So we said, oh, come, okay, please come on, and you know the old saying, you listen to what somebody says, but you watch what they do. So we stayed in touch with them. I did during all these years, and they approached various property owners, and they acquired track by track, and it's around 1,648 acres right now. That land is very marvelous. It's contiguous to I-75, and normally, that's one of the main things that prospective industries look at. So, right now, these gentlemen stuck to what they said. They didn't just come and sell us the store, they'd come in and they backed it up with their monies, millions, and they'd come back and said, well, we need the infrastructure put in. So we got the water on both ends, 12-inch water line on both ends. Now they need the sewage, the gas, and the fiber optics, and that's it. The state will put it, once we get it all on there, the state will put it on their map, and they will come, and when they have prospective industrial clients, they'll say, let's go to Monroe County, which we don't have a whole bunch of right now. You just probably saw where Peach County and Houston County got together and bought about 600 acres for a new industrial park right on 75, and we're competing with Houston County, Lawrence County, Cook County, all over, and we cannot compete if we do not have a product to offer. So this is the best product that we have right now, so I'm asking you gentlemen to please support this project, because this will be the, what we can look forward to in the future, because right now, we don't know what's going to happen with Georgia Power. We know the focus is on renewable energy, renewable energy, and they've already shut down one of their units, I understand, down there. They got three up and running, and that's our biggest taxpayer. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, but this will give us something to sell, and also, it will give the students that graduate Mary first and something to look forward to. Most of the students out there, 80, 89% of them, they leave the next week after they graduate, because there is no opportunity, very little. So I'm asking you all to please support it. I commend you all for, for annexing the initial parcel zone, and I please hope that you do the same. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Are there any others that want to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, of the proposed annexation? All right. Are there any now that want to speak against? Those that have raised your hands, if y'all want to come, one at a time, please state your name and address for the record. Whoever wants to speak first.
Hi, my name is Lynn Anthony. I live right off the corner of Smith Road and Zomer Road. First of all, I don't have a clue as to what the plan is, how it affects, and how it affects me. My house is right there. I don't know if I've missed some meetings, or there's just been no information put out before me, but I would like, you know, I mean, I don't know how good my word is, or my opposition, or whatever. I would just like.
We don't know what's going to happen in the future. But this will give us something to sell and also it will give the students that graduate Mary First something to look forward to. Most of the students out there, 80, 89% of them, they leave the next week after they graduate because there is no opportunity here, very little. So I'm asking you all to please support it. I commend you all for annexing the initial parcel zone and I please hope that you do the same. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Are there any others that want to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, the proposed annexation? All right. Are there any now that want to speak against? Those that have raised your hands, if y'all want to come, one at a time, please state your name and address for the record. Whoever wants to speak first.
Hi, my name is Lynn Atty. I live right off the corner of Smith Road and Zomer Road. First of all, I don't have a clue as to what the plan is, how it affects, and how it affects me. My house is right there. I don't know if I've missed some meetings or there's just been no information put out there for me. But I would like, you know, I mean, I don't know how good my word is or my opposition or whatever. I would just like there to be some information for people who have to live there. I don't know if it's being residential, commercial, whatever, but I've been in that, in my home for 16, 17 years. I bought it randomly. And I have enjoyed the peace and quiet and the country feel of it. That's why I bought it, because I enjoy that. And if that is going to be interrupted where it's going to be, you know, something is going there, I think that it was important for us to know for the people who lived there, right there. Because I don't know how many people here live there, but I live right there. I walk my dogs up and down and everything. So I would just like, you know, somebody to be a little more forthcoming to tell me, you know, to just give me some idea of what kind of traffic issue this is going to cause. Because it's still a little small road going out there. So what, you know, how that's going to affect me, my property values, and my way of life there. That's what I want to know. And I have one of my neighbors right down the street from me, if you want to come up, Teresa, the same. She has the same feeling. And we spoke about it because we both run down Smith Road or walk or whatever, you know, that's our exercise. And so, you know, I just wanted us to have a voice on to have some questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Teresa Hobbs and my husband and I built a home down the road 13 months ago. And we love it there. But we have a real problem with litter. And the only thing I can see from this is that it will probably get worse. And, you know, we don't understand why people just throw their trash out. Plus, as Lynette said, you know, we feel safe there. We're out in the country. And if we wanted to live around industry and everything like that, we would have moved into the city. My husband and I moved here to get away from city life. So we're totally against this. As she said, we don't know what this will do to our property values and our neighborhood. It's bad enough when the interstates shuts down, people detour down Johnsonville Road to Smith Road and, you know, when they have an accident or something, or they're working on the highways. And she, like I, get out and walk, you know, for exercise and everything. And we just, I happened to see a sign posted on Smith Road about this proposed annexation. But, and that's why, you know, I'm here. But otherwise, I wouldn't have known about it. But I know she said that a number of years ago, they wanted to put a truck stop in out that way, which would be horrible to say the least. But anyway, so we are in total opposition of this. So we have no idea what this might do to our neighborhood and our taxes and the traffic and everything else. So, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Greg Hill. I live at 294 Rocky Creek Road. Everybody's concerned about congestion and things like that, like, in fact, these two ladies here that spoke about what their concern was, do y'all remember their names?
Yes.
Yeah. Ms. Lynette and Ms. Teresa, okay? I haven't met them, but before y'all voted originally, y'all voted properly because it was concern for citizens, okay? Second time, you didn't care what citizens said over in that area. You changed your vote, okay? The biggest problem that I have is with your annexation of the county property. Ms. Lynette and Ms. Teresa and myself and several other people that are around there have no say-so in what goes on there. We don't elect you city councilman in office. So we have no way to hold you accountable or responsible for what you bring in there or what you say-so, what you're going to bring in. They have no plan of what's going to come in there. They're just going to say, hey, let's see what we can get from the state, let's bring it off. I understand how it works, okay? The biggest problem I have is these county citizens have no say-so. That's my problem, okay? I don't think you, you'll listen to your constituents here in the city that elect you. That's right. But it kind of shows that these people in the county, that you don't care. Because you had a huge crowd up here to start with that voiced their opposition and their opinion. You listened to them once and then you didn't listen to them, okay? One other thing, the other issues that I have, yes, I'm on the Development Authority also. And I don't think a single one, you probably haven't asked the Development Authority why. They said no to this. Have you asked anybody on the Development Authority about that? Not a single one? There might be a good reason. And it was said by some of them before. I've said that if you're going to develop something, a mega site, 100 acres, 1,000 acres more for industrial, commercial use, you would like to try to put that site in an area where you have little or no residential impact for citizens, okay? To me, that should be a no-brainer, really, okay? And there's places here in this county to do that. It's also said after that statement, it don't really matter if they come out with pitchforks and torches, you can always squash them down, right? So you really, in my opinion, you really need to listen to these citizens in the county. They have legitimate concerns a lot about what comes in and what's brought in. Like I said, the biggest issues, they don't have a say-so. If it was county, Mr. Georgia Mama, that's his district, guess what? They can hold him accountable. If they don't like what brings in, they can vote him out. They can't do that with any of you. So you arbitrarily annex county property into the city. So you've got a big, huge dog leg going out to the county, taking county property and making it all the city. I understand we all want development, but I know all of you have heard, we don't want it looking like McDonald's. There's a lot of warehouses. Guess what? There's a lot of empty warehouses up there now. So how you tax base is going to work for these corporations that come in, there's a lot more thought needs to be given to this, okay? I understand along the interstate, you're going to have some development. But we all want controlled, measured, controlled growth, not arbitrarily annexation and bringing whatever you want. It'd be nice to have a good plan with it. You want a ton of warehouses and a ton of semi trucks coming in? I bet their citizens don't. I'd love to see some manufacturing come in, yeah. You know what? That property in here, that they got annexed, I've driven through there today, I think I counted five creeks crossing through there. It's a billyfield country with a lot of venues and stuff, a lot of grazing is going to have to be done. On top of that now, could be a lot of good-sized basins built too, residential homes, sure. But I'd be very careful about annexing that in and commercial and industrial. But moreover, anything is, I think you really need to be listening to the county citizens around there and their concerns. You just really need to have a say-so. And y'all need to remember that what you decide, it's unfortunate they can't hold any accountability for y'all. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Head. All right, anybody else?
My name is Michael Robine. I'm a future resident of this area. I was fortunate enough to buy some land out there off of Rocky Creek Road about two years ago. We're in the process of building a house right now and this was kind of our idea of getting out into the country, getting away from all the congestion, all the trucks, that's probably the biggest thing, trucks. My wife and I moved down here in 2004 to get away from Henry County and McDonough that, you know, at the 216 and all those trucks and all those empty warehouses, that area is awful. And we were so happy to get away from that. We live in Sydney Woods at the moment, right off of 42. But we want to move out there to Rocky Creek Road. We want to live the country life. So we're definitely against this and I like the country the way it is. I know there's going to be growth in our lifetime, but I like what Greg said with a measured kind of approach to this, not just kind of arbitrarily competing with another county or, you know, competing with everybody else. This isn't about competition. This is where we live. So I think that's it.
All right, anybody else to speak in opposition? Anybody else to speak in opposition? Recognizing no other interest from anybody to speak in opposition. Are there any others that have not yet been heard that wish to be heard on this matter? Any others? All right. We give her a chance for the applicant to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to remind the City Council the whole purpose of this annexation request in the first place, right? The last 15 years, we have been at the county's encouragement and the Development Authority's encouragement acquiring property for development here in this county. The past 15 years, we've been trying to figure out how to get water and sewer to the property. A year and a half ago, we had joint meetings with the city, Development Authority, and the county. Everybody was in agreement on how this process is going to work. We revised by the city that if we want to hook into the city sewer system, we need to be a part of the city. County has no services to offer. And without those services, this property is honestly, it's not worth it. It's not worth what I got in, it's not worth developing. Without sewer and water to this property, I'm stuck with not many options at all. You're stuck with not many options at all. And I was informed, is water and sewer this property? Looking at the city utilities, I mean, you're a member of the city, a resident of the city. That's what this annexation request is for. It's not to script the county, it's not to script somebody else's authority over this property, it's to get water and sewer to it so then we can develop a meaningful plan on what we're going to do with the property. Why do we have no correct plans? Simple, I don't know what's on it. Get utilities on it, what the full potential of this property is. Love to put residents on it. Love to put some white manufacturing on it. All those options are available, but only if we can learn sewer in this property, a service that the county cannot offer. The last 15 years, we've been discussing with them, has helped me with no viable solution to do that. That's what this annexation is all about. We're not trying to go around behind somebody, we're not trying to go to a different authority to get zoning requests and all those things. It is simply that. And it was the city, county, and the Development Authority, Development Authority 18 months ago, and their encouragement to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hannah. All right. At this time, I think everybody that has expressed an interest in being heard on this matter has been heard, so we will close the floor for the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed and it is for council's consideration. Are there any motions forthcoming?
I believe we approve the ordinance.
Do you have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Councilman Howard, any discussion or questions at this time?
Yeah, I like what you said about the measured and controlled growth. That's always been one of the things I looked at. I will say in front of everybody on camera, I don't personally care. In the initial phases of this, I supported it. It wasn't until the citizens came out here, when I said that and I looked at it, I said, you know what? That was the biggest thing that I lacked in my decision. I cannot speak for anybody else at this table. I lacked in my decision was listening to people who live out there. We're back at this table again. The only thing I asked was, let's sit down and see how this is going to look years from now. There can be a plan put together where it's a win-win situation. Right now, I don't think we're there. I also like, I look at things like response time for the police department and the fire department. Because we're growing the area, response times are going to be great. So I'm trying to look at the totality of the circumstances, but I also don't want to stifle growth in this county and this city either. Mr. Evans was right. When people graduate here, the numbers tell us, they leave and they leave rather quickly. They have very little hope. They don't have any hope because they're not many good-paying jobs here. But I will always, I will always side with the people who live out there. Like I said before, as I close up, I have a sawmill beside my house. I hate that sawmill. I hate, I have dust that blows from a sawmill. The land is not, whatever you want to say, graded properly. It's a bunch of concrete and stuff that's thrown together. And quite frankly, it's an eyesore for me and my wife. I'm a veteran 21 years and my wife followed my sorry butt around this whole world to only look at a sawmill in the back of our house. So when I hear y'all talking, hey, I'm listening. I will promise you, I will never be influenced by big business, by whatever coming in. I won't. I'm always listening to what y'all have to say. But we, but I recommend that we sit down, let's figure out a way to say, how do we make this a win-win situation? It can be done, but we all got to be open-minded about it. So I...
All right, any other questions or comments?
No, ma'am. It still bothers me that these people out there are to have zero control on what goes on. We can say we can do it with ordinances, all we want to, but what's going to go out there is whatever you want to, is going to put out there.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
It's just for council's consideration at this time. All right, any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed to the motion? Let the record reflect that there are four votes in favor and two votes opposed and the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a Forsyth Convention and Districts Bureau of Ordinance Recommendation.
I have a copy of a letter from John Howard as the chairman of the Mission Districts Bureau. The lady that is being recommended is Alondra. She is the assistant manager at Eltahado Restaurant. She has 10-plus years with the restaurant service. Yolanda has spoken with her and she's very excited about the possibility of being on the CDP board. And so that comes to you as a recommendation from the CDP board to appoint her to fulfill the vacancy that had been left by Maria McDaniel. Her term expires December the 3rd, first division.
And who will they replace her with again?
Her name is Alondra O C H O A.
She's at Eltahado, you said?
At Eltahado. She is...
I like diversity.
What's the lady's name?
I like diversity.
Irma.
It's Irma. I like diversity. I like diversity.
Don't move. We have a motion by Councilman Goolsby. Is there a second to approve?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hewitt. Any discussion or questions related to this appointment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Councilman Howard? Did you vote in favor on that? I couldn't see you.
Well, I was figuring, being that I made the recommendation and I...
Oh, I know. I'm just waiting to see the hand. We'll count that as a unanimous then, very well.
I was recusing myself from the vote.
Oh, you're going to recuse yourself, all right.
Yeah, I mean, I already voted on CDP. I made a record...
I got you, I got you, I got you.
I was voting. I figured I didn't need to vote here.
I got you.
You see, look at you all.
You got five votes in favor, any opposed, none opposed, and we got one abstention. All right? We'll count that as a unanimous then, very well.
I was recusing myself from the vote.
Oh, you're going to recuse yourself, all right.
Yeah, I mean, I already, I already voted on CBB, I made a record...
I got you, I got you, I got you.
I was voting, I just figured I didn't need to vote here.
I got you.
You see, look at you all.
You got five votes in favor, any opposed, none opposed, and we got one at extension. All right? It passes. Next item on the agenda is approval of budget amendments for golf course superintendent. Ms. Hall?
When we approved the 2021 budget, we did not have the final information from the golf course, and I realized a couple of weeks ago that we left that blank, actually, we didn't even add the, the revenue in. So we need to amend the budget, and the way that we do the budget is the total salary plus the taxes, and then we estimate $8,000 for insurances, and so we need to amend the budget for an expense in the recreation department of a total of $69,361, and then a revenue in the general fund to offset that for the $69,361.
All right, is there a motion to do those?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dodd, seconded by Councilman Hewitt. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously and so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of legal services agreement, agreements for water and wastewater relating to the USDA loan.
You'll remember that this was on the last agenda, and you approved this, we submitted this to the USDA, and the USDA rejected it. The reason that they rejected it was, as I stated during the meeting, that this was just for our local attorney services, that we did not have the one from the bond counsel, and USDA said that all of that had to be in one agreement. So this one covers, not only Mr. Melton, but it also covers the bond attorney. It's still the same, the $60,000 for Tinkett, Harris, Melton, and Watson, and then the bond attorneys will be $30,000 plus 250 for expenses. So the total for the water is $90,250, and the total for the wastewater is $90,250 for all legal services.
All right, is there a motion to approve those legal service agreements?
Remove.
Motion from Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Stroud.
Do we need to remove the, the one we approved at the last meeting, or does this supersede that one, or?
This, this will supersede it.
It will, okay.
The USDA has approved it.
Got you. Thank you.
...
All right, we have a motion and second. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously and so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of requisitions greater than $5,000, of which we have two, the one that is listed to All Seasons Tree Service for $5,800, and the one we added by amendment to All Seasons Tree Service for $5,600. Is there a motion to approve one or both of those invoices, and then maybe we'll get a explanation?
Maybe we'll vote on it.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Stroud, seconded by Councilman Hewitt. Any discussion or questions?
I have some pictures that are coming around. The pictures are the, of the one that is the $5,800. Normally, we do not pay $5,800 for one tree. As you'll see, this tree is on the corner of Jones and Chambers Street, and it is less than two foot away from our main theater lines that feed the hospital. In order for any of the tree services to take this down, we'll have to bring a crane in to safely remove it, because it's so close in the power lines and it's so close to that house. So that's, that's the reason for the cost of the $5,800. So the one that we added that is the $5,600, there is a dead tree over in Hart Circle that our guys cannot take down, and so the cost of that is $1,400. And then there's four trees on Indian Springs Drive, where, the best way to describe it is where the Lawson's used to live, and then where Vince Williams lives, it's right across from Adam Street. The sidewalk literally is like this in several places, and it's because of those large trees and the roots from those trees. There's, there, there are some people that do not want to see those large trees removed, but unfortunately, in, in order to fix the sidewalks, we've got to remove those. I've already spoken with the tree board, and as soon as we remove those trees, then they are going to recommend a non-invasive, low-growing tree that we can replant and put some more trees there in that area. So that's, the removal of those four trees is $4,200.
What did the resident say?
Well, Vincent's contacted me on a regular basis for the last several years, asking me to please hurry up and get those trees removed. The residents in the other home, because they are large beautiful trees, they really don't want to see the large beautiful trees removed, but it, it's just, it's just a toll of hassle. But that's, that, that's the problem. The trees are in front of two pieces of property, and one, that the house is close to the trees, and, and so there's the fear of that, and then the, the other, that they, they really don't want to see the, the large trees removed.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously and so approved, and that moves to central reports, and we'll start with the city manager's report.
Hopefully, you've seen my report, and it's, we won't need to go over a lot of that. One of the things that we want to make sure that you guys are okay with, we do have the 1st of July fireworks set for July 3rd, and when you approved that, we said that right then, we were just talking about the fireworks, that we'd like to talk about some, some other vendors, and before Main Street gets too far into this, they want to make sure that you guys are okay if we pursue having food trucks, because if we get a couple of food trucks, then we don't have the, the vendors with the tents and all of the other things that come along with that. So if you guys are okay with that, then we, we will pursue having some, typically get some food trucks there for 1st of July. The next thing...
I like the most that we have food trucks at the following...
Second.
Motion by Councilman Stroud, seconded by Councilman Goolsby and Councilman Hewitt. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously to support adding food trucks.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Next thing is, you should have a flyer at each of your desks, and those, as you said, are attended virtually. I'll send that out to you as well by email. The tree board is having their annual job tournament. Tammy is working to help them with the tournament. The tournament is actually June the 11th, the deadline to register is June, June the 4th. So if you're interested in participating, you'll contact Tammy to set up a team and pay those fees. Hopefully, we can get everybody to participate, have a good turnout for that. You'll see the other things there. If you have any questions about the things that are on my report, please let me know. I will add that I did send out an email today about the splash pad. Splash pad was down again today. We're having some serious issues, not only with the splash pad and the operation of the splash pad, but with children being left at the splash pad. There are people that are dropping children off and leaving them at splash pad and going up, and they cannot see them from where they are, the baboons, and so in my report, I've got the, we're, we're getting some additional signs. There's, there are a lot of children that are showing up, that, that there are no adults with them. We had some issues over the weekend, there was a Facebook post about children that had scooters that were riding on the splash pad, there were children that had basketballs that were using the buckets that are on the splash pad, that were using those as the basketball goals. So I, you know, we're, we're just having issues.
At what point can we, can we start looking for a method to, you know, technically out there? I mean, I know that's a project that I own, but we're going to keep having those problems going on.
Yeah, I took my granddaughter out there, and there was, like Tina, that was driving.
And we get the back cover basketball courts behind that, we can, we can have an outlet there. But, but in the meantime, you're right, we got an issue, but maybe part of it, we could look, we've got that concession stand area, could we, could we maybe find somebody to run the concession stand? And then you've got the presence of an adult there, whether it's a city employee, the cheaper way would be to bid it out, maybe let somebody run it, but they don't work for the city then, but at least they could report something that's going on if you've got an adult there.
I think it'd be a wonderful opportunity to hire a teenager, someone who's responsible enough for the job, and it's the interview process, and, you know, and if you just want to have eyes on it, you know, and if they, if something happens, they can handle, then they know who to call. But, you know, that'd be a wonderful way for a teenager to make money on consulting. Um, he gives the responsibility and what to do and how to do it. I think that could be an excellent idea.
Sounds good to me.
The other thing on my report is the public hearings that are coming forward here on May 17th. We have Casseview Development Partners' rezoning request from R1 to R2, and, I'm sorry, in my report, it says from R1 to R1, and it should be R1 and R2, they're requesting to be rezoned to R2, and they put shopping. The other couple of hearing that night is the Donatius trailer for conditional use in R3 to allow personal services at 158 MLK. That is a location where the young lady that had the beauty shop in the lower part of the Union building that passed away, he wants to move his barber shop in there. Public hearing for amendments to the alcohol ordinance, all of those will come forward for a public hearing on May the 17th. If there's no questions about the report, then I have something else that I need to review with you, as to whether you ready to move forward, unless there's questions about anything in the report.
Are there any questions for the city manager?
I have a question that wasn't on, that wasn't on the report. I had a couple people contacting me from the neighborhood, that the gentleman was here last, either last meeting or before, trying to get the bearings for the sidewalks. And their question, I was hoping Tammy was going to be here, the questions they have are, is he going to put the sidewalks in? So there's two questions. We told him that he had to put them in, so it's going to be, when does he have to put them in? And, you know, if he doesn't, what's the, what's the, the worry over there is, he's going to finish building the houses and never put the sidewalks in, and he's going back to Columbus and bringing out those sidewalks, and we've got no grounds to hold him accountable.
I don't think he's giving any additional permits until he does something with sidewalks, but I will confirm that.
And, and that was sort of their question was, could we limit the number of permits until they see the sidewalks going in and the properties he's already finished, right? And I told him I'd bring it up, so that was it.
Mr. Hall, also, go over Greg for a second. I talked to Mr. Ronnie Shipman a couple of days ago, actually FaceTime, and he showed me his property, just the drainage issues he's having over there, and now because of the drainage, the, the roadway, I guess, leads back to the, what is it, their contest back there?
It's, it's actually, it's Georgia Power's easement that's back there.
Okay.
We do have a sewer line that is back there.
Right.
We clean up our part of it, where the majority of the beaker dams are, it's on private property.
Right.
And that's where these issues come from.
Right.
This has been, this may be, when Cat Ride is still here, this was still, so, I mean, he's been gone three years, four years.
Right.
It's, it's just an ongoing issue. I think there's, there's some sort of regulation or something that you can't just go in and tear up beaker dams.
Right.
But even if we go in and destroy away the part of the beaker dams that are on our sewer line, on our easement, within 24 hours, we'll build it back.
Yeah, that's right. And he told me that, he said, as quick as they tear it down, as quick as they rebuild it. It's, I know before, before he asked me, pretty frustrating, because when he showed me the well, when his swimming pool, he had his swimming pool installed, now the dirt because of the erosion, the way that the drain was put in, that now everything from his swimming pool is starting to, kind of, the ground is starting to get away all of his pool. So, you know, I really would like to ask somebody to go out there and see if there's a revolution going on.
Greg was supposed to go, and we put him a couple weeks ago.
He told me, Greg.
He probably did, I think.
He told me.
There's just, there's just not a lot we can do...
Right.
Other than what's on our easement, because the rest of it is on private property.
Right. I thought I said, Jennifer, you know, it's private.
Can we look at having somebody trap the beaker, would we look at that?
I think she, she's... They've done that before, but, you know, they're, they're resilient, they just come right back, it mustn't affect the area.
We, we could try, yeah. I think she is, try to trap. How is the beaker dam going to see it? On the city drive, like, or the sewer?
Well, I think what happens is the beaker dams are down a little bit, and then it's backing up on our, on the highway. They feel like it's crossing out of the highway that was back there.
And then we have the service on a power line, we really have no way to get out there unless we follow the small bump. From what he showed me, from what I was looking at, there's really no way for us to service power on the line because it's all flooded due to the beaker dam. So it's just an issue, like, I, I know he's not looking for an answer right now, I know he's pretty frustrated about it, and we all agree, but we're just trying to give a...
Those beavers there, tough customer, but...
All right, any other questions for the city manager?
I was trying to go for a quick...
All right, hearing none, she has another issue for us. Go ahead, Mr. ...
Just to give you a little bit of an update, we have been experiencing issues with our computers and with our systems. Our income system, which is our financial software that we use to process billing and other processes, was down. This, this that I had written says that it is still down. They did call me about 5:30 this afternoon, I did go and check, and our system is back up immediately after this meeting. There are several checklists that I've got to go and go through before the ladies can start taking payments, and I'll have all of that done tonight, so the first thing in the morning that they can, they can take care of that.
How does this affect online payments?
If you look at your online payment, if you try to make an online payment, it tells you that you owe zero.
It did to me, and earlier to that, yeah. I was wondering if that had changed since it's back up? Has that changed, or is it still...
It will, it will have changed as a, the checklist that I have to do is to go through and verify that everything is as it should be. Of course, I won't be able to check every individual account, but I, when I, when I went upstairs to check, I pulled up one of the city bills, it shows the May 1st bill that went out, and it shows an amount due. So we'll, we'll be able to check those things and verify, so it should, as of 5:30 this afternoon, if, if people look at their bills, if they should, it should show the correct amount that they owe.
Sure paid it, went up to zero.
I did, I did, but I still, now...
Our system was taken down early in the, in the morning, on Thursday morning, due to an attack on our servers. We're in the very early stages of analyzing our systems. We do know that there are, there is no evidence that any of our operations were looked at or taken from our systems. Our systems are protected, and on Thursday morning, we took additional measures to add more protection to our systems. We have, well, we do have our systems backups, provided that everything goes fine with the, with the checklist, we'll have our systems back up tonight, and, and they'll be able to take payments in the morning. We apologize for the inconvenience of not being able to take the payment for your utility bills, and I recommend that we extend the due dates and, and the disconnects by the number of days that our system has been out. And so our system went out in the morning on Thursday morning, and so I recommended you that you approve that we extend the due date, which will, let's see, tomorrow is a due date, so penalties would normally go on tomorrow, and then the, the next day is a cutoff date for the other route, and I recommend that we extend those as well by the number of days that the, that the system has been down.
So move. Second. Motion from Councilman Stroud, seconded by Councilman Goolsby. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? Councilman Lawrence? Councilman Lawrence, all right, are there any opposed? Are there any not voting? Councilman Lawrence, you voted in favor?
He did.
Okay, all right. Motion car, I think my machine was slow. All right, motion carries unanimously and so approved. All right, anything else from or for the city manager?
I don't have anything to add. Ms. Hall mentioned three things about being advertised with the, the meeting of the 17th. I don't have anything else, may I ask some questions?
Any questions for the city attorney? All right. Mayor's report? I don't think I have anything to add. Council board reports? Any council board reports? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to additional business. Is there any additional business? Anything that is not heretofore been handled before this council tonight? Anything that is not heretofore been handled before this council tonight?
No.
Did you go to the GOC board meetings the other night?
Yes.
What did they say about their, uh, watering situation on this, all these new drains they got planted?
Hello. That's where he showed teams on this plan. They got a problem. It's just, it's, it's not, it's not a system. They can, they can cut on certain heads, but they, they have to individually cut. It's just, it's a patch. It's a patch over here. They got a problem. Again, they, they estimate and they, they know it's gonna be expensive to do, redo the irrigation system that they got. They're, they're getting an estimate for it and then they'll.
It'll be really expensive, they also have to replant all those tea boxes.
Well, they're watering them, they're watering them.
But they're.
They are, they're watering, I mean, they're watering everyone. They're, they're getting to, they're keeping on. They're not gonna be, now they can, they can irrigate certain ones with, with the current system they have, but they don't have heads that block. So there are those, they're having to hand water. But they're coming back with a proposal on, on irrigating the entire GOC force and it's gonna, it's gonna be way faster, but I don't know what, I don't know what the long-term plans want to be for it. But it's, they're making an honest effort to, to water the, the, the tea box or something that they don't lose any ground. They're making an honest effort. They're not listening. I know, I know they're not, but it looks bad.
That should have fixed this breakfast.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Hey, Ms. Hall, whenever the parking lot is done for the new city hall field, one thing I just ask for consideration, as council can consider it as well, can we have two to three parking spots for veteran parking? You know, I was saying that, we, we said we support our, support our veterans, I think that'd be a great idea, um, if we have just two to three parking spots for veteran parking. I don't want it approved, I know we talked about it, but I don't know if it is ever approved. So just, just, I want to make sure that, because when the final phase is up, I just want to make sure we measure twice and cut once on that. Um, I get a lot of complaints about something that's on my street, just that house that might have burned down a couple of years ago. Uh, if we, if, if we can get some, some movement on that, that is, it's an obstacle. I mean, I live on the street, but I also have my neighbors, and I represent my neighbors now, um, about moving that.
We're working on a pond, pond action, I'm sorry. Uh, you speak on that.
Go ahead. Anywhere, wherever you're coming.
Yes, sir, so with that house, it's been, um, we've been working on it for a couple of years now. Before it ever burned down, it was a nuisance in that area.
It was.
Um, I had been out there multiple times. There has been, eight citations written, um, and there is also a warrant coming for his arrest moment for not paying the citations. So, um, he is not able to check down the building, he's kind of all over the place. Um, but there, we are taking actions and we have built a case file on that and we're going to be working with the city to hopefully be able to, at some point in the future, uh, tear down that house and, and clear that land. It is in my question.
Thank you so much.
And Bobby, that process takes about how long to condemn them? Go through the whole thing?
I think we talked about that, I think I asked that lady about two months, remember that? And, uh, I turned it, turned it up.
Because my fear now is that things are still, I mean, that, that's just a perfect green ground for this. I just right now, it's a damn challenge. Um, two things that I'm done.
That's fine.
Uh, former Florida chairman.
Just right.
That's probably, okay. And last thing, Greg, I, I love what you said, maybe last thing to leave before last, that we're growing, we're moving, we just gotta make sure that we plan for this, for the movement that we have, for the growth that we have. Um, issues like this right here, you know, let, let's make sure we plan for this kind of stuff. Nobody's getting sideswiped by, that, that we're growing intelligently. I like what Greg did and said about, uh, the measure to control growth. So let, let's make sure that we do all these decisions. Maybe we got a work session, we got residents saying, let's do it. I, I know none of us like to be opposed to something like this right here, because this is huge. Either way it swings, it's huge for the residents and it's huge for growing our county. But it's, but until we get on one accord and have one vision, right, that real vision is, how, how do we want to grow this thing? You know, until that, until we start doing that, uh, we're gonna be spending our wheels on this mission.
I'm glad you brought that up, because we mentioned, you talked about having a work session with planning and zoning, um, getting a zoning map and all of us getting on the same page, so that planning and zoning understands our thoughts and we understand their thoughts. And I talked with Martin Presley about it briefly the other day and he, he was all for it, he thought it was a great idea. And, and I think one example of, of how that works is that thing that's coming before us is, you know, you look at the zoning that it's currently zoned, what someone initially asked for and then they went back and, and sort of reversed it and went to a, a more appropriate zoning. I really think our only control to control growth is the zoning, right? And you can't stop the growth, but you gotta be smart about it and allow for things to happen. And you're exactly right on this property here, what the citizens don't realize that live in the county is there's nothing planned for that right now. I mean, we're taking it as its current zoning, so tomorrow somebody could go out there and whatever that zoning is and build whatever it is zoned for. And we're gonna let them have input and, and, you know, information on it. So, no, I think you're exactly right, I think the sooner we can do that, the better because, I mean, there are a lot of people looking at Monroe County and the city of Forsyth currently.
But we don't want to miss out.
Yeah. Or, but, you know, a few things related to this annexation, they have to remain under the current zoning for at least a year by state law. We can't, if we wanted to change it, well then we can't. So there's some time to work on things. The only thing y'all voting on tonight was annex, not to, not to allow something to be done other than what would be allowed to be done on it right now. For example, they could put chicken houses on agriculture right now, that probably would not be very appealing. But they could do that if it's still in the county, whether it's in the county or the city. I, I just think our board will be responsible and we have to put in safeguards. I get the concerns, I, I, and I hate for our board to ever be divided on anything and I know we have, I know this is a contentious issue and has been, uh, at both votes and I get it on both sides, I understand it. We just see it differently, but I think we all want to do the right thing with citizens. Uh, and I think, I think we can do it and measure to lay. And I think you bring up some good points, Councilman Stroud, Councilman Hewitt. Um, and I think we just got to plan and work together to make the right things happen for the city. None of us want it to be something crazy. Uh, I was, I was north of here, a county or two over the weekend and, I mean, I know the traffic woes and some of the concerns, we, we have to think about those things.
So Mr. Mayor, since the clock has started on that, I'm fine with that, I, I told them I'm staying the one-year clock, it, it's already started. Anytime after May 28th, I'm free after May 28th. All right? So, 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 so let's go ahead and start putting some, some dates out there. I mean, I'm saying summertime's coming up, vacation time is coming up, but let, let's start looking at that, because that clock is moving and if we, if we're not diligent, and then a year from now, we're like, oh man, well, this is what we intend to do, but we didn't do it. So I'm, I'm perfectly fine, we'll have to come up with a date now, but I would love us to come up, so I'm looking at throwing things out there soon, within the next six weeks.
I agree, I agree. Keep in mind, that year is the minimum.
Right.
We don't have to approve anything in a year.
Sure.
That's the minimum at which they can ask for it this year. Um, I, to take that a little further, uh, I mentioned to the chamber sometime last year and I mentioned it to them again more recently and I mentioned it to Commissioner Davis because we've met a couple of times. Uh, it would be a great idea if we could have a community planning retreat, whether it's here or out of county, where, with city, county, city parliament, development authority, Board of Education, everybody. And realizing we're gonna disagree on a whole bunch of stuff, but if we can find two or three big items that we can agree on and start working towards and doing some visioning for the community, I think it's a start. That's what successful communities are doing. There are 159 counties in the state, the good ones are doing that, they're sitting down and figuring it out together. And I think, I think that's a good thing, but I think it needs to be hosted probably by the chamber, some neutral group, doesn't need to be the city inviting the county or the county inviting the city. Let's have one group, have a facilitator, a professional facilitator that can, uh, bring us together. And I think that's done in addition to the zoning, our leading that we have as our council, we still need to have our meeting with our zoning board, talk about our internal workings. But then let's also talk about the macro picture, because everybody says what they don't want to see Monroe County be, but let's talk about what we want to see Monroe County be and how we can do that through planning. That's, that's, that's how I think we get to the measure of growth that Mr. Head and you were speaking about is through proper planning and, and, you know, it's never too late to do some planning and I think we can benefit from that. Uh, a date, uh, Councilman Davis had thrown out a date of June 25th, but he and I talked over the weekend. I really think it's best if the chamber heads it up, works out the date and invites all the parties and then maybe, maybe we'll have a better chance of maximum participation. There are probably some people on some boards, if the city were hosting it, would not come or vice versa, if the county were hosting, it might not come. So I think it needs to be, you know, they got a governmental affairs committee and if they're willing to do it, but I think they probably got to get through the precipice first, so.
One, one thing, I don't, I don't view these citizens as Forsyth citizens, Monroe County citizens, but we're all Monroe County citizens. And they do have representation. I, I represent them the same as, as, uh.
Yeah, but they can't vote you out of all, they.
No, they can't. They can, they can spread the word that.
Well, yeah. But if something was proposed, if a developer came in here with, want to change the zoning and whatever, they come do their presentation to have a zoning change, I mean, we're not gonna ignore the people, whatever it is, they want them to come in and put in a circus over there and people don't want a circus over there, but we're not just gonna put a circus in, I mean, we're just not gonna do it. That's just not how we've operated in the last eight years, I don't know why we would start now doing that.
And to prevent situations like yours, you know, we could, we could mandate buffers and things that would protect the homeowners in the area from a sawmill or, you know, anything egregious that would be an issue.
There's still, we, there's still regulations on what they can and can't do. Our, our government is stronger than, than they.
Yeah, but, but the people who live there don't know about regulations and policies of EPA, they're looking at, I bought a house to get away from the hustle and bustle from up north, I'm in the county now, I'm in the country now, a lot of peace and quiet, now I'm not gonna have peace and quiet. So they're not, they're not understanding, but I wouldn't want to hear a buffer either. So, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, that's probably how some people who are there are looking for, I've talked to them before, after that meeting, and then that was the biggest concern right there, I wouldn't like to look after this is developed. So that's, like I said, we, we can go back and forth all day about what we like and don't like and whatever. I think it's a wonderful idea, I am pro development, but I'm, but I want to do the right one, what everybody says.
I, I think he's, they don't want to go and do it the right way and I think if we, if we see that they're not doing it the right way, we have no choice. We, we, we have no plan, we got, we got a project on 41 that, that we, we zone on and this is like a debacle right now, and we give nothing, well, we haven't, it's taken a while to do anything now.
So that, 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 that kind of supports my point, I mean.
Do you disagree with that? Nothing. What I was gonna say when Mike said that was, these can be the nicest guys in the world with the best intentions, tomorrow, things can change, right? They can lose the property, somebody else, someone passes away, whatever, and all of a sudden those good intentions, you know, that we took at face value. We, we've been bitten by that, by the development you're talking about, we got bitten by a small house.
Yep.
Because we all said, oh yeah, this person's gonna do what they're gonna do and they didn't do it. I think the only thing that protects us and helps us control is our zoning and protecting our zoning and being smart about our zoning, that's why it's so important to have planning and zoning and us on the same page, so that when people come to them and want to take, I mean, naturally you go buy a hundred acres and it's zoned R1, but the first thing I want to do is make it R3, so now I can put three times the number of houses on there and three times the amount of money I'm gonna make. But we gotta be smart about where do we want R3 housing, where do we want R2 housing, where do we want R1 housing, where do we want light industrial? I mean, and you're right, having a plan and using our zoning is really our only way to manage it. I mean, you can't stop the growth, the growth's gonna happen. If I own property, I have my legal rights to sell it to you for whatever it's currently zoned, if you want to come put 50 chicken houses out there tomorrow, it's zoned agriculture, you can do it. You know, so having control and being smart about it is exactly what we gotta do.
All right, very good. Sounds like we got a good start for our, uh, planning meeting already, so let's, let's work on that. So we want to do it maybe after, after May for sure.
I've talked to Electric Cities and Daryl Ingram is, is willing to, to facilitate again and we can hold it at the VI training facility. I just needed a date and, and I had told them it would probably be June, is it with Mark to, to not attend?
Could you mark a reminder for next meeting for us to kind of come up with dates by then and to have a date by the end of next week? All right? Any additional business that we have covered so far?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, Councilman Howard.
I just want to say, uh, I mean, I'm looking at everything everybody's been, you know, of course, tonight we had four, people vote for, do again, that's okay. I mean, it is, we, we're not, we, we're not supposed to sit around and be bothered heads and agree on everything every time together, that's the reason why we have the number of people we have on council. But, you know, there's also a perception that four of us that voted for this thing, like we don't care about anybody else in Monroe County and, and, and we're, you know, flexing our muscles because we can't get voted out. That's not true. Everybody likes to stand around and say they want to see your site grow or they want Monroe County to grow, but then every time something comes here with an opportunity for us to grow, there's always reasons why we can't do it. We always hear about, oh, there ought to be somewhere else in the county that we can do this, we, or there's somewhere else we, well, but the reality is, there's only so much land we're on. Besides, to the, besides the landline, bottom line, you know, and, and we have nowhere to go. And we know why those kinds of work up, we understand that. I mean, we, y'all, y'all thought me first about wanting the water for our dip, as far as what's gonna go on in Juliet and everything. We have yet to hear the county say one time, they didn't want to work with us on that, but yet, right now they're working on that, but they haven't said anything about us. We got, we got this one Monroe meeting, which I do not change, because I don't see that as one Monroe. The city of Forsyth has never really included in anything. I, the times I have, and I know somebody's gonna say, well, you have it going but a few times, but it wasn't but a few times that made me say I was avoiding it. Because the few times I did go, there were projects being talked about on the board and I wanted it, did anybody ever say anything about we're including the city's site to do anything? That's the problem, that's the real problem. We have a face of, right now, with all this panic we got, I mean, I'm saying, I ain't got no problem with the meeting, but the man, the man in the town, the man, all the man's face wanted to do was get water to run this front, that's all. He couldn't get it done in the county, he went to court, the court did it, that's all we knew is this. But right now, we, we have literally thrown the baby out of the bath door, that's what we've done, and we created a panic. Now we're talking about, we need to do all these things beforehand, we, yeah, we do need to have controls and that, we do, I mean, that's anywhere, that's anywhere to get us, and, and, you know, we've made some mistakes in the past, we've let some projects go on that we have yet to do anything about, that's our fault, yes, it is, I agree. But yet, at the same time, with those particular issues, we also have to say, when, anybody who's guilty of that, who started projects and finished them, when they come back again... who's guilty of that, who started projects and finished them, when they come back again, we have to say, no, you can't do anything else because you hadn't finished what you doing. That's how we handle it. That's all we got to do. But I, I just think we need to calm down. I mean, all we're supposed to do was move water through this landlot. We need to have a little right to this. But I mean, we're always, we're always creating a panic that ain't there talking about how something's going to go there, that ain't used there yet. I mean, Council Stroud, I, you know, I, I got to be honest, I mean, you're talking about police, uh, you know, residents and, and how they respond to that, they ain't nothing to respond to yet. We, we not that far yet. I, I get what you're saying. Hey, that's why I'm against the solid base, because the first thing I, I, I told WMAC what I was saying, a heavyweight boxing round in three minutes. And in those three minutes, when they count those things, somebody gets hit a five head well over a hundred times. So what I said was, at the same time, if, if it is true to bring me to my house and we can solve it and we don't have the right amount of officers on the street and that's true to me, if I have to go fuck my head a hundred times with, with a damn pipe, you already know that's wrong. So I, I get all that. I get all that, but I think we need to just calm down and think about this thing. I don't see where anything went wrong in that. I don't see the, where the four of us voted for, I don't see what we did wrong. I don't see that says we don't care. I don't see that the four of you, the two of you that voted against it, I don't see that says that you don't want to grow. You just, it's just that right now that you don't agree with it because you don't think it's going the right way, that's okay too. That's fine. You got a right to do it, but, but I mean, I, I just think all this panic we got is unnecessary at this point in time. We have, all we did was vote to put water through it in this man, in this man, on this man's property. That's all we did. Nothing else has gone on. And, and we're sitting here talking about having meetings about what do this man's property does, and it's not even the president. I mean, still there, I don't know, but if he is, he's Lord. I mean, you know, he's still in the room. I mean, and, and, and we need to make sure we include him in. But to me, the thing like, we're talking about what we're going to do with this man's property and, and we just don't trust nothing we say.
The only, the only thing different right now is we've got a new taxpayer in the city so far.
Thank you.
Now, other changes will come down the road, they'll ask for other things, I know, but right now that's the only thing.
But one of the things you get asked for, what we'll be, we'll come right back to